Business meeting of the council and it is seven thirty six. And we have a four. Omar is out today due to health reasons and he has been quarantined. Brandon. In case.
Ladies and gentlemen, please thank us both. If you want to thank people for the year twenty twenty three, please bless our hearts on our land. If you're in this twenty twenty four, please be with Phil Mark Smith if he is not. Wait up tonight, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Give joy and peace to the angels.
I believe in the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And how far can you call Rose?
Rowland. O'Berry.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Kinsley.
Here.
Fires.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
First thing on the agenda is consent agenda. All right, everybody was emailed a copy of the minutes. Is there a motion?
Need to make an amendment to the agenda. Need you to add to the agenda due to concerns that people have reached out to voicemail. They've requested we hire lawyers. So I would request to make a motion that we hire Mr. Mark Flynn to represent the council.
Second.
So instead of... The ones that we already had.
Yes, he has a specialty from municipal law. He already plus he is through several different local counties bordering on us. He's going to guide us about it on how to proceed, get issues worked out. Quick, quick.
Good evening. And not instead of your normal town attorney, but just on special matters.
Yes.
All right, so the motion is to add to Mr. Kinsley.
Yes, President. The same council answers questions that we may have.
All right, so...
We don't fuck.
All right, we will add that to the agenda under... We will change that and put that right before committee reports. And we will call that additional representation. All right, so I have a motion in place that needs to be adjusted to include amended agenda with additional representation.
We also need to amend the agenda. We probably need to go into a brief closed session.
For... For...
Oh, I'm sorry. For town man, town clerk, and legal matters.
So...
Closed session.
Legal matters, personnel. Okay, and we will add that under additional representation, closed session. All right, so, once again, that is with amendments for additional representation and closed session for legal matters and personnel. Was O'Berry, was that still a motion?
Yep.
And is there a second? I have a motion and a second to accept this agenda with the additions of additional representation and closed session for legal matters and personnel. Madam Clerk.
Rowland.
Here.
O'Berry.
Here.
Wilson.
Yes.
Kinsley.
Yes.
Fires.
Here.
Brown.
All right, next up is citizen comments and...
You didn't get up. You got stiff already.
You had that on down on the list, so anyway. Got to bear with me, I got several things. First off, I ask again, how come we still don't have a P A system that citizens can hear what's going on? It's been, you know, brought up and brought up and brought up. I don't see anything on the budget on the agenda tonight. What's going on with that? Thought they had one done July one of twenty twenty three. And so here we are, keep on, we won't have one, it'll be July twenty four. Anyway. You quoted a couple of code sections that you have the right, the mayor has the right to vote. I disagree with that. The ordinance again. Section two, chapter two, the mayor, section two, the mayor shall, this is the ordinance book. The mayor shall be the chief executive officer of the town and shall preside in all meetings of the council, of the council. And shall have the right to discuss all matters coming before the council, but shall not vote on such matters except in a case of a town. That's a code which has never been changed.
An ordinance.
Yes, sir.
I need more room, but anyway. You were saying that... Fifteen point two, fourteen twenty three powers of chairman or mayor. In addition to being president of office there, the chairman or mayor, in case they may be, shall be the head of the local government for official functions and ceremonial purposes. He shall have a vote, but no veto. In reference to that, in fifteen point two, fourteen twenty seven B, states that on final vote or any order to resolution in the name of each member of the governing body, voting and how he voted shall be recorded. However, votes on all ordinances, resolutions adopted prior to February the twenty seventh, nineteen ninety eight, in which a unanimous vote of governing bodies recorded shall be deemed to have the valid recording. Anyway, council, a council member, not mayor, should get a attorney general's opinion on this. One of you needs to pursue this. Going through the website for the town, I saw, Mayor, where you have gone through. One particular ordinance, this pertains to the mayor being a judge, which is discontinued years ago. Probably was when all judges had to be attorneys or have a law degree. But you put in here, and you put this on your edit, you put in here, we turned this over to the county decades ago.
Correct.
Well, you didn't say when this is done.
Yeah, I actually don't know when it was done.
Right, but you did some research and find out. But my point is, why don't you go through the ordinance book? And go through what needs to be deleted, codified, decodified, present it to the attorney and make sure it is correct. And then go through the whole ordinance book. There's more, I've read the book many times, so not yet. But anyway, there's a lot in there that needs to come out. So go through the whole ordinance book and take this to an attorney and find out if it's legal and bring it back. And you can, you can recodify a number of things at one time. So you can bring it back to council and have it voted on. But you've done, you put side remarks on these things and it looks like a, I don't know what. People from some other place keep going to that website and look at it and say, what a boho place this is. So anyway, that's just one, there's many on here that you've done like that. So I won't go through each one of them. The friends on the clubhouse, there's no contract with them. At what standing does they have? That probably belongs to the town, one hundred percent. So why, the council needs to have a contract with them if they will continue using the bill. Council needs to know what's going on, what money, what's happening down there, what money is coming in, and so forth. So y'all, and I brought that up to several of you before, you need to get a contract with that group if they're going to stay in business. Several of you have requested copies of records, financial and otherwise, from the mayor. My thing is, have y'all received these yet? If you haven't, the mayor is in violation of the town ordinance by not furnishing copies of these records to you. I think that's the last one, Mr. Man. All they have going down, I could stay up here all night to go through, but I don't have enough room to go through everything. But council needs to get themselves in order. That's the best thing I can say. And I will say that I am guilty when I was on council with these ordinances. We did not go through and get this done a long time ago. But anyway, they need to be done and ordinances have to be followed, even now they were done in nineteen thirty eight, which I got a chuckle in the last meeting. But it doesn't make it different. They have not changed whatsoever. So y'all as a collective group need to get together and get it done. Thank you.
All right, and if anybody doesn't know, this is Nick Sheffield, and he is the public safety coordinator for Sussex, and he's going to address that for us.
Madam Mayor, members of council and citizens, I hate to talk to my back to people, so I apologize. You probably seem to turn around a little bit. Hey, just wanted to come tonight, I think it's been probably March since I've seen you all, but just want to swing by and have a brief conversation. Since I started in May, I've been focused on throughout the county to include the towns of Stony Creek and Jared and Wakefield and Waverly to identify target hazards throughout the county that, you know, hopefully we can mitigate. And so I know at a couple meetings, two oh five Jared Avenue's come up. That's obviously been something that was brought to my attention even from Jared Fire and EMS. And so working in coordination with state fire marshal's office, with Councilman Rawlings, with Sussex County Building officials office, and a couple other licensing agencies, you know, I wanted to put a comprehensive list of documents together that would allow me to really kind of get to the bottom, what's going on there, right? And is it, is it safe? And so I know that's been a concern. So what I would ask specifically of you guys is, any zoning information that you have, being I know that that's at, obviously, the lowest form of government, right? So at the town level, zoning is your enforcement action. So anything that you have from the zoning or rezoning perspective that you could provide me, any documentation, as well as from a business licensing aspect, any business licenses that have been obtained, would be tremendously helpful to me to put this comprehensive packet together so that I can then be educated and informed to hopefully address the issues. We may find that everything is up the car, we may find that it's not. But if it's not, I commit to you guys, as, you know, I always say the Sussex County rate, but you all are part of that, I always commit to making sure things are safe. So that's just kind of why I'm here in a nutshell, just wanted to ask for that information so that we can move forward. Again, in partnership with Councilman Rawlings, Chief Wells, he's aware that I was coming tonight to speak as well, so I just wanted to request that. Would take any questions that you may have. I appreciate your time, otherwise. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, are y'all prepared to accept taxes with the card debit and credit card system that you told me would be?
No.
With this? Until we get a budget, I don't think nobody's paid a tax, y'all have more money to play with. I need to be honest.
We had one glitch Friday, but it's been running through.
And I can't swear that they get it, but I got a note in my mailbox from the post lady, says she could not deliver my mail because the trash cans were in the way. I don't think nobody plays with your trash cans. So I'm assuming that they were sent back down from the truck. If you could just kind of let them know, kind of heads up, though, be mindful where they put the trash cans. I missed a ten dollar, a lot of tickets. You always go to look at that.
So, next on the agenda is the two thousand and twenty three taxes. Everything has been running smoothly. I was going to address card reader, we kind of just did that. Again, we only had one glitch where it's went out. Otherwise, that's been doing good. With all of the deposits, including today's deposits, personal property, we have collected twenty thousand five hundred sixty dollars sixty one cents. Go state, ten thousand four hundred seventy three dollars and nine cents.
How much of that eighty thousand miles have you collected in back taxes?
We actually just collected some more today and actually do not have that figured for you guys. We actually just had one today that dated back to two thousand and eighteen. We've got them that are steady, coming in, Allison has sent a letter, reminding them that, you know, these stocks will be taken place, that these can actually varnish, so they're, they're pretty.
You going to discuss the restaurant tonight?
I, yes ma'am. I've got a few extra things that I actually didn't have on here. W twos, they're required by law to be postmarked about thirty first of this month, and everything is scheduled for that. Council members want, those ready, email me, send it to you guys, so you can just come pick them up. The voucher program that we've done the last couple of years, all of that money is already appropriated for the voucher program. That will actually be starting up pretty soon. I have two more businesses that I've got to touch base with to verify that they still want to participate. And as soon as all of that is ready to roll, we put that on the page and put it on Facebook.
Madam, you know, I have a question. I've had several questions to ask. Why the food truck will be receiving vouchers? And, I would say, and any money that vouchers that are not cashed in, what happens to the balance? Say, say if you allowing, if you walked in here, seventy five hundred dollars for Garrett Hardware, only six thousand dollars worth of vouchers are turned in, what happens to the other fifteen hundred?
Just like the previous years, each business was allotted ten thousand dollars. If they only collected five thousand dollars worth of vouchers, they'd get a check for the additional five thousand dollars. Regarding the funeral home, the funeral home is a business that is here in Jared. They requested information. BJ's, same thing, yes, he's a food truck, but he actually is a Jared business. He has Jared business license, he pays meals, his meal tax. So those are the reasons that those two will be included. The other thing is there are several grants that I'm working on at the moment. One of them is the first management grant, there's a T-Mobile grant, an A R P, community challenge grant, and a national fitness campaign grant. So more to come with that. The, got a telephone call today, some of you know that we've been working on the DOC property since two thousand and eighteen. Right now, it's still in the town's name. There's been some issues with property lines. Mrs. Taylor's property for decades, her sheds have been where her sheds are. The DOC, when everything was getting ready to transfer over to them, they did not want indeed legally for her sheds to be on the DOC property, state property. So more paperwork we still have today. Right now, we're still in the holding pattern until they get back me to find out where they want to go next. When you have town attorneys and you have DOC attorneys, nothing is a quick process. So that's kind of where we're at. The other thing is the restaurant. Not exactly sure where we're at right now. Nick has the contract. He actually, the last time I talked to him, he said that he had turned it over to the attorney. The, reached that to him, I've texted him, I've called him, and I heard anything.
Don't give him a deadline?
Can't, we did not give.
My mom won't tell me he's got thirty days, no, and one.
That is, since it is, the respect it is, I feel that's something that can't even happen.
Have you considered with the figures that you all sent me, with how much money the restaurant is in the hole? I mean, why would we keep throwing good money after bad? I mean, we have to collect meal tax for the next twenty five years to pay for this deficit.
So it's, it's all some different kinds of things. But yeah, that's, that's what we are looking for. Hopefully, he'll call me back tomorrow.
Have all of the areas been done to the restaurant, the building?
Everything has been completed except for the... The deep fryers, those still have to be repaired. And still have to finish all the rest of the floor. Other than that.
So even if you're going to, it's not red?
Yep.
Quick question about, what is it? Voucher program?
Yes.
That money was allocated, correct?
Yes.
You don't have a budget. None of the money, correct me if I'm wrong, but we spoke with the treasurer about fire department, none of the money that was allocated to the fire department is going to pay you, correct?
I'd have to go back and look.
It has not been paid. Absolutely. If money's allocated, we don't have a budget, as I don't see a voucher program even go on without us actually having it on paper at Fox.
Because that was grant funded?
Okay.
And that's what that was created.
And the fire department money is grant funded as well?
Uh, some of it.
Eighty to look at. State money, it's got a good one. I just wanted to, what's my opinion on that?
But yeah, the fire program money, y'all already had. Yeah, y'all already had.
So we have that, we don't have the other that was allocated to... I knew it was two separate ones, I do know that.
But yeah, y'all already had the grant.
I can see how we can continue to do anything in this town till we get a budget. I mean, just like Eric said about the taxes, I understand that the tax rate didn't change, but you all have not voted on the tax rate not changing because we don't have a budget. Who's to say that you wouldn't have lowered it, that you wouldn't have raised it? I mean, I just, you have got to get together and get a budget.
I have actually met with, I have actually met with two of the council members on the finance committee, I've had one more. Hopefully, I can meet with him.
Why, why are we, why are we meeting with two people?
It should be the whole council, they need with the whole council.
I thought we discussed this in the last meeting, man.
It's, it's a finance.
I don't, it doesn't matter, it's the whole council.
You never, you never got notification of a meeting that I never, I never got a text, email, anything about financial meeting.
But it's the whole council, the council has to vote on the budget, it's the whole council.
Brandon, you...
I'm on that committee, yes.
You made a motion that all these little committees...
Be consolidated to all council members. Obviously, that fell on deaf ears.
Actually, he did not make a motion.
I'm sorry, I think he did.
Uh, no, he did not. It was, it was, it was brought up, the committees actually be, that he would be the entire council, and I stated that we didn't discuss it.
Except that you've gone on a call meetings with two people.
Not with two people, individual, one on one.
Brandon, make a motion tonight. Make a motion. Make a motion.
Make a motion that we dissolve all committees and all council members on all financial, personnel committees.
That will actually, that will actually be a legal question.
Well, a good thing I got a lawyer. That's exactly its purpose, for oversight.
That will, that will be a legal question.
This running around, gotta stop, it's got to, because that is toxic. We have to have somebody, when we need a lawyer, it's great to have one. He's committed, he's committed to stay here with us, so.
I called Mr. Slateman on a town matter, and I'm still waiting for him to call the back. So obviously, he's not.
Well, it may be one of those things because Mr. Slateman has actually sent emails to all of us sitting up here that he will not answer citizens' comments, a request for a town issue, that it has to come through us.
Well, the least you can do is email back and say that. It's weird because you don't.
Mayor, in the past, you have told members of council they cannot contact the town attorney. You know, that's wrong, you can't do that. You said you're the only one supposed to, so if you never see him or her, to talk to them, how do you know what you're saying is correct?
Mr. Glenn, would you like to...
You know, I actually, let me introduce myself. I'm Mark Glenn, I've been a local government attorney since long before some of y'all were born, nineteen eighty two, and so everybody here, I'm older than everybody, right? In any, in any event... In any event, I had the same kind of question when I was the city attorney in Winchester. That's where I really started encountering that. And, and honestly, the attorney's client is right there. And the attorney really should just answer right there to council. The way it should work is when citizens have, uh, questions or complaints or whatever, talk with your member of council and see if that member of council will raise the question to the attorney. It's, I mean, again, you know, as a, as a, the attorney client relationship is the attorney and these are the clients, not the citizens. And it sounds sort of harsh, but if you don't do that, you know, if, if the attorney's charged by the hour, then you're gonna have really big legal bills. So in any event, I, I understand the, you know, the issues, but, uh, I have to tell you, that's always been this attorney's, uh, practice.
I understand what you're saying completely, but the problem is, is that when the community has voiced things at a council meeting, we get no response, no answer to anything. So then we have no other recourse but to contact somebody who could possibly help us.
Right, right.
Can I ask a question about credit card? If I pay my taxes, do I pay the service fee or is the town covering that?
No, you pay those.
What is it?
Ten percent.
Thank you.
Yeah, we get, it's, yeah, we've got the, the, the machine and all the fees that we get charged.
Who is the holder of the credit card? Is the processor?
That is through quick.
If I write a check, you will hold it for ninety days like last year. I mean, I might like these by what y'all did. That's ridiculous. She's trying a hundred dollars.
So the credit card or debit card, uh,
Get plastic.
It does not go directly into the bank? Because how does it, how does it go through the bank?
Uh, yeah, um, just like with any kind of plastic, um, it actually goes through. We ac- we actually can, can actually send an invoice. Um, I'm gonna use Eric as an example. Um, Eric can say, look, um, I actually don't want to come down and, and, and pay my taxes. Can I do it over the phone? No, you can't do it over the telephone, but I can send you an invoice. And then you can actually pay it through the invoice and then we get notification when that thing.
But maybe you can check into it because I know I have some five businesses and we have Square, we have Prepay. There are a lot of other companies that you can send those invoices through and their percentage is way less than ten percent. So that should be something maybe for next year to save your citizen money. There's a lot of different companies out there.
By law, unless they change the law, you can only add three percent to anything, whether it is a government body. Whether it's county, town, city, whatever it is, it's three percent. You cannot add ten percent. I would be checking on that. If they allow you to do ten percent, anybody that's charged ten percent is coming back and suing you.
Uh, the, it's a percentage plus a set fee plus three.
Usually, an entity can decide if they're gonna pass it to the consumer or pay it themselves. So the town did not agree to pay it, so it's being passed to us, which is approximately that ten percent.
Mr. Flynn, is that right at ten percent?
You know, I, I, before I answer that for the, for my, my client here, I would like to, I'd have to take a look at the statutes because I haven't looked at everything.
I would think it used to be, because I, you know.
I'm not disagreeing, but I'm just.
I know, I know. Ten percent is.
Especially out of this work, who gets that ten percent? The guy who gets it out of business is doing the transaction.
Not the county.
They do the actual hard dollar on a thousand.
Um, we have, we have to pay the company.
What percentage do you pay them?
What's your percentage you pay?
Um, that's what I just said. It's a percentage plus a set fee plus the machine.
But that should be broken down for the customer.
I can't actually.
Wait, y'all voted to char- y'all voted to charge the ta- the people who pay the taxes ten percent?
This was actually decided before this council actually came on, when we first did the reader, and then the reader went down. The ten percent isn't something that.
Well, you have to know the difference between a ten percent and what the town is giving.
Um, off the top of my head, I can't tell you because it is, it's a percentage and then it's a set name per dollar amount.
So what's the settlement?
Yeah.
We got a new something over there.
If it's costing you ten percent, you need to go somewhere else and find a different.
That's what I was saying.
So, yeah, we, we, we tried since two thousand and eighteen to get one through the S B. And tried and tried and then tried, but never did.
They got rid of the bank card department.
But do the people that come into your eyes.
I guess they, they, they are actually told, um, that it's ten percent and none of them. So.
Write a check.
Don't sign it.
So, um, we will actually do the, uh, with this plan, you're gonna have to go. This is Mark Flynn from.
Uh, I live in New Kent. That's my office is in New Kent.
And is it, uh, like Allen Allen and Allen? What is the?
It's not quite that fancy. Mark, I do actually operate under Mark Flynn Legal Services, P L L C. I have very few clients. I've been trying to retire, but that hasn't worked out very well. And I actually have a very short letter agreement just to sign off on.
So, uh, that's where we're gonna go next, is the additional representations, that will coincide with the attorneys that we're already using.
You don't tell us how much money we're paying for this stuff?
Yeah, of course.
You terminated it, right?
Well, we still have, uh, real wrong and then.
We had decided that we was slowly.
Okay.
When.
And I didn't know. That's, that's fine. I'm sorry.
That wasn't, that's never been voted.
But we're supposed to know before we call him and get him to do any, any other legal work for us because he's done a lot of legal work. We didn't know the time, we don't know what he did.
Mr. Flynn's gonna help provide additional oversight to help us get through these challenges, these speed bumps that we keep running into. Because everybody says we gotta contact the law, gotta contact the law, but it's nice that this man's gonna, hey, I can answer those questions for you. And he's right here on site. It's gonna cost a little bit more to the town, but it's more insurance oversight, you know, taxpayer dollars. Where the money's going, how it's being allocated, where it's being used.
I, I guess my question for you, Mr. Flynn, is, um, we, we have actually tried before with previous councils to actually have attorney on the tank. And council is not willing to do that, but they said that it costs not too much. So my question to you would be, what are you gonna charge?
Well, sure. I, and what I generally charge is three hundred dollars an hour. I don't charge mileage. I don't charge copying, any other expenses like that. And, well, I know this sounds like a used car salesman saying, what do I need to get you in the car today? But I tend to not bill anything like all the hours that I would do. I really am, I'm in love with local government, have been since, as a, to the members here, folks here, since nineteen eighty-two, been service the local government. So it's three hundred dollars an hour. And whether it's in addition to whatever you're paying Mr. Slateman or instead of, I, I would recommend, lady here asked the question, I, it would not make any sense for me to come there to a meeting and charge y'all for that. I'm happy to come whenever you want me to, but you know, when things are going well, you know, you don't, you just don't need it. So anyway, that's, that's, uh, that's the way I do it. And happy to answer any questions. I guess you're in the, you're in the agenda item about whether you want to hire me.
I'll make a motion that we hire Mark Flynn Legal Services for legal battles with the town.
Yes, um, yeah, I just wanna add something, um, because shining legal, I came here purposely for that. Because it has been mentioned, Madam Mayor, um, Council, it has been mentioned that, um, Brits Eat On The Go has been tied up in litigation. And that has been brought, I have been served paperwork, but I refused to show up. But I wanna come to clear that because that has not happened. Um, there's been a lot of lies being told. And my reputation is very, very important. Number one, I'm a pastor in this town. I pastor two churches and my reputation is very, very important. And when you come for my livelihood, you come for my reputation, and you're disrespectful to my family, Houston, we have a problem. I have documentation. I know a lot of stuff been said, they've been get, um, Brits Eat On The Go a bad rap, but that is not the case. I have receipts and I have pictures of the receipts. If you find the receipt book, you will see what I paid to this town. And truth be told, I've, I've been quiet, I've been quiet. October the twenty-second, October twenty-twenty-two, I requested, and we're going into twenty-twenty-four. I requested a itemized document asking if I owe the town this type of money, please show me in black and white. That has not been done. And I know, um, the Freedom of Information Act is statewide, is global. Anytime someone asks for something, and before you say, Mayor, if I want it, I can come to the town and get it, that's bogus because you already made a complaint to Sussex County that I'm aggressive, I'm irate and out of control. But I want to know, how can I be irate and out of control? Only time someone become irate and out of control, and your, um, aspect is when they stand up to you and call you in the lies that you have done. And I can't be here for that purpose because I want my name cleared. I will like my deposit back. Because when I left that restaurant, the restaurant was in tip-top shape. And like, you know, even the health, the health inspector stated that the floor was not done correctly by you. Since you the mayor of the town and you stated to me on several occasions, you are the mayor of the town and you can do what you want to do. And I come here to put that out because I am tired of you tarnishing my name, my reputation, my businesses, even Ms. Judith Hudges, before she left. Because every time I need a receipt, it seemed like the receipt is broke, can't find the copy, can't make this. But this nice lady, before she was forced out of here, and I'm gonna tell it like it was, before she was forced out of here, she made copies of everything that I requested. But guess what you told her, Mayor? You said you will not take Mr. London anything. I would take it myself. And here we're going into twenty-twenty-four. I have none of it. You lied and said that Marlo Jones stole chairs from the restaurant. I watched their Facebook, the mess, because I couldn't be here because I was away in Florida and I wish I could have been here. But you failed to tell them in twenty-twenty-one, because I have the time stamps on my pictures. I asked you, can I buy ten chairs from the restaurant? So I can use it for my Christmas dinner for my family. This is what you told me. You said, don't worry about no money for the chairs, you can have them. But you told the people that Marlo Jones stole ten chairs, I have the chairs in my garage that you gave me. And I got the pictures to show it. You told too many lies, Mayor, and you remind me of the unjust judge at St. Luke the eighteenth church. And I, and, and I, and I had a lot of respect for you. I've been knowing you since I was fourteen years old. And if I would have known you would have done me like that, I would have never came to this town. You said I was aggressive, irate, out of control, or was I aggressive, irate, and out of control when you couldn't afford gas money to go on your vacation? But guess who gave you money? Brits Eat On The Go. You told the people that I, I owe this town over twenty-plus thousand dollars. How is that possible to owe that kind of money and still in operation? Talk to me, Mayor. You gotta answer for everything, but you're quiet tonight. And stop telling the people that Brits Eat On The Go is tied up in litigation because I did my homework. I worked for the Department of Corrections and they told me before you come to a meeting, have your facts straight, and I got it straight. The reason why I have, it haven't been pursued because your numbers don't match. And people know my character. They know I'm about my business. And they know I do well. The receipts, if you find your receipt book, I got the pictures I will send y'all, the receipt book that you need to look for. Because if you can't find the receipt book, that lets you know the books has been cooked. I have documentation. And the town, and I've already been to Virginia Credit Union and asked for my printout from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-two. And when you ask for a bank statement, that's what you refuse to show the people because if they see the bank statement, they gonna see every check that Brits Eat On The Go paid to the town. And where's the cash payments that I gave you, Mayor? Let's talk about that. Let's talk about the cash payments and being a business, because I just wanted to see. And you remember before your phone broke down, I have all the text messages that you and me had, stating before I left here, this town, that all my bills was up and paid, but now so happened. I asked for a deposit. Now I owe the town over twenty-plus thousand dollars. You need to come clean. And I just pray and hope this day that I see that the town members find what I've been trying to tell. But your puppet show is over. You only got one left on your puppet string. Everybody else has come alive. Your puppet show is over. And it's time for you to come clean. And in my closing, there was only one person that could keep you straight. And that was Mr. Wayne Wilson. God rest his soul. Ho, 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 I'm talking. I'm talking.
You're getting ready to talk about my deceiving.
I, I, I'm freedom of, I, I, I admit, I'm just saying, you know, I'm saying what I'm saying because right now, Mayor, you have no regard for the town, you have no regard for anyone else, and he was the only one that can call you in your own, but now you are in the hands of God. You are in the hands of God. And I wanna let you know everything I said, and this not just for me coming tonight. My main purpose of coming to you tonight and tell the town to say I forgive you. I came here tonight after all the verbal and the disrespect and the assassination of my character. I came here tonight to tell you I forgive you because I refuse to go into another year, but I want my deposit back. Because when the deposit is being asked, you come up with everything what is not right. But you have not provided me, Mayor, with no itemized document. I've been requested for twenty-twenty-two. I've been asking you for this. If I owe you this, show me in black and white. You refuse. And you talk about everybody else, Freedom of Information Act. That's all, that's all I have. That's all I have. That's all, that's all I have, that's all I have, I'm finished. Yes, ma'am. I paid the town twelve hundred dollars, I paid them one six hundred dollars in cash and the other ones in cash. And the mayor stated she would give me a receipt, and I did not get the receipt. I I I left that, I got the videos, I got the pictures, how clean the restaurant was, and now the other tenant is going through the same thing. And I just want, I just wanted to be fair, because the other two restaurants, hold on, hold on, Mayor.
Hey, Mr. London made his point, you're having an action by counsel, yes.
Thank you, thank you, sir, I appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
We were in the process of a motion that I'm doing and a second by Ann to bring Mr. Mark Flynn of New Kent, Virginia, from Mark Flynn Legal Services in to assist the town with legal issues.
Collins?
Yes.
Do we need a law attorney?
Uh, to be honest, I don't think it's necessary. Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kenzley? Jay Fiers?
Yes.
Traum?
Yes.
Motion passes. Mr. Flynn, congratulations.
Oh, well, thank you, yeah.
But I do think you should be here every minute because you can see the surface that we have.
Yeah, move over. Session.
Now, he said he didn't think it was necessary, he didn't say true.
So, thank you. If you have, I think on your, then you have on the amendment agenda, a motion going to closed session. Madam Mayor, I'll just read it and then somebody can actually make that motion, if that's okay?
That will be perfect.
And it would be a motion going to closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two thirty-seven eleven A one for the discussion, consideration of the performance, demo- performance to motion salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, this is regarding the town manager or council, and pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two thirty-seven eleven A eight, consultation with legal counsel employed by retained, employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters, requiring supervision of legal advice by such counsel, and that's regarding the finances of the town, the budget of those things. And so that would, and that just would be rolled through.
...
I think it'd be crazy.
Holy stink, girl.
About a motion first, you, here first you need a motion to come out of closed session. Make a motion to come out of closed session.
Uh, Madam Clerk, will you call today?
Roberts?
Yay.
O'Berry? Yay. Wilson?
Yes.
Kinsley?
Yay.
Fires?
Yeah.
Brown?
Yay.
And then second, you would need a, a motion, and again, of course, by roll call or vote, um, that pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.237-11, that while in closed session, uh, that the matters you went into closed session for are allowed under the Freedom of Information Act, and while in closed session, you only discuss the matters for which you went into closed session. It's a motion with a second, and then we'll, I like that motion.
Jesse.
Roberts?
Yay.
O'Berry?
Very.
Wilson?
Yeah.
Kinsley?
Yay.
Fires?
Yeah.
Brown?
Yay.
All right, and closed session.
Thank you. And you want me to, uh, over, overboard something? So, the, uh, majority of council, um, intends to make some changes regarding the management of the town. Uh, they're planning to appoint an interim town manager, a bit, a separate, a, a different person, uh, and, and to appoint a, a different town clerk. Um, and that will happen by motions here in, in just a few minutes. And then, two, uh, uh, there will be motions, uh, to, one, uh, direct financial institutions to recognize President Council and Town Manager as signatories on accounts, and to make available to the town via those persons all records that the banks hold, uh, of the towns, and that at the beginning, uh, it also gets into the clubhouse because that's town property, too. Um, and then, uh, as you all know, right, treasurer, the county treasurer runs for reelection, and then they either get beat, or they retire, or went, moved on, or whatever. And every time that happens, there's a closeout audit to just make sure everything's cool for that, you know, the prior, the retiring treasurer, and everything's cool, then you know where you stand with the new one coming in. So I think there would be a motion to just have a closeout audit. Um, and, which is, which is fairly normal in my experience. So thus, that was the, I guess that's what the actions, uh, that were discussed in the closed. And then, um, and I'm sorry, I, there's another thing, it's, it's, and that is that, um, the town council will advertise for a public hearing for the budget. I think it's held the first Monday in February for the public hearing. And then, the state law says you have to have seven days between the public hearing and the adoption, so that these, I guess, the two, the following Tuesday, which is eight days later, uh, that, that they would act on the, um, the budget. In my opinion, adopting the budget, yeah, it's better to have it adopted and have the tax rate set. The tax rate continues, as my opinion, the tax rate does rates continue on, whether the budget has been adopted or not. The budget is about appropriating funds. The, the, uh, tax ordinances are about collecting funds. So, I know there were a few questions about do we have to pay our taxes until a budget is adopted. It's been my, uh, it's, um, opinion based on the number of cases over the decades, that those are two separate animals, and the tax rate still is the tax rate. I don't thi, and I think there is no change contemplated in the tax rates. Uh, and also, I believe the council will, um, uh, have a motion to not have any penalties or int, or interest, late fees or interest accrued on any payment made before March 1st, by March 1st. Because there have been some issues, right? Uh, you all have addressed them, so...
Can you go back to this manager thing? Are we hiring a manager?
Yes, ma'am.
As you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
That will be advertised in what way?
Well, they're gonna do an interim appointment now, and then I think the council will address whether to advertise and, and go out. Uh, hiring people is not subject to the Public Recruitment Act. Uh, so you actually don't have to do that, but, but, uh, but still. Though, I think it's two steps. One is that some- One is some immediate actions, and then follow through.
What is the duty of a manager consistent with the president of council?
It's actually, you know, there, you all mentioned, somebody mentioned, you had mentioned the 1938 ordinance, and it's funny, it actually has some of the provisions. But the state law, which is a good bit later, if you all want to answer that.
Yes, please.
15.2-1541. I know you read it every night. Because if you have insomnia, it'll put you right to sleep. So here's now my chance. It's, this is what the manager does. See that all ordinances, resolutions, directives, and orders of the governing body, and laws of the Commonwealth required to be enforced through the governing body are faithfully executed. Carry out the laws. Make reports to the governing body from time to time, as required or deemed advisable, on the affairs of locality under the person's control and supervision. Receive reports from heads of offices, that's larger localities mostly. And then submit to the governing body a proposed annual budget in accordance with general law, with recommendations. Execute the budget as finally adopted by the governing body. Keep the governing body fully advised of the locality's financial condition and its future financial needs. And appoint all officers and employees of the locality, except as he, with some exceptions. That's a base, I mean, that's a, that's a big nutshell, right?
Where the president did for that, with the mayor's absence, pretty much.
Actually, the mayor resides, if the mayor is absent, then the president and council, that's a separate thing from the man, from the town manager. And typically, the way it works is the town manager, treasurer, whoever it is, you know, the invoices come in from, you know, every company. The invoices come in, and they write the checks, and then whoever the council appoints, designates among themselves to come in and be, and sign checks, that they have two signatures on the checks. You know, to get their checks and balances, that's...
But the manager will not be a council member?
No, ma'am. And then, also, in addition to the manager, the current position, and under 15.2-1536, every locality shall appoint or designate a clerk for the governing body. So, so that's, that's under council's mental control also.
Okay, council has voted to make some...
Not voted, not voted.
Has decided to make some changes and to appoint a particular person to act as town manager. I should start immediately. Council's discussion to appoint Mrs. Pat Ward, if she's willing to do this for us, to fill this position, and of course, the hours and the pay will be determined on a later date. We will, I'm not sure at this point, we probably will advertise, because I don't think that you would want to do this on a regular basis for a very long time. But it does start immediately. Also, the same thing with clerks, we appreciate everything that Miss Ward has done and what the mayor has done, but we also decided to do the same thing, make a change with the clerk. And that is also taking effect immediately. And we are asking Mrs. Ward to smack if she will fill in as a temporary clerk until we can advertise and get her comfortable down for her appointment of being. And also as treasurer, because that's something that you and Miss Ward, if she decides to do it, we work with. We will be advertising, interviewing, and hiring, so this takes place immediately.
And all of that actually has to be voted on?
Yes, we will vote on.
So you need a second.
Second. Rollins?
Yay.
O'Berry?
Yay.
Wilson?
No.
Kinsley?
Yay.
Byers?
Yay.
Brown?
Yay.
And it passes.
A motion to, I'll just read it for you.
Yeah.
On your, on your tat, on your budget. A motion to advertise a public hearing for a meeting to be held February 5th, I think, is it? Is that the first Monday?
Yeah, it was February the 5th.
February 5th will be a work session. That'll be all. For the public hearing on the budget and the tax rates. And then, to consider adoption of a budget at a meeting on February 14th?
February 12th.
12th.
Which is Monday.
Yeah.
If it was...
Oh, we, we're going to be in the 12th.
If, if, yeah, if the paperwork...
Yeah.
Right.
So that should, that would be a motion. And to include in that, I'm sorry, an amnesty for maybe there'd be no interest or penalties or late fees or any taxes paid by March 1st.
By March 1st.
I'm making a motion.
Second.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Um, Rollins?
Yay.
O'Berry?
No.
Wilson? Yay. Kinsley?
Yay.
Byers?
Yay.
Brown?
Yay.
Motion passes.
Do you have another couple of motions?
Do we?
The audit?
Yes.
And the signatories and the opening accounts?
Do you want me to read them, or?
That'd be great.
All right. Resolution to direct financial institutions regarding financial accounts for the town of Jared and offices. Be it resolved by the town council of the town of Jared that all financial institutions that hold or manage any funds of the town or any other agencies, offices, are hereby directed to disclose all such accounts, information, and other items in possession of such institutions to the representatives of the town, president of council, town manager, and to such persons the town manager may designate. Be it further resolved that all financial institutions are directing us, the president of council and town manager, as proper and own signatories to any accounts held by the institution.
Can the motion be adjourned? Second.
Well, I have a motion. Have a second. Do I know who else? You've got another time.
I got one, sister. Yes. I got one right here.
All right, yes. All right, yeah, I... And was that you that seconded? Rollins?
Yay.
O'Berry?
No.
Wilson?
No.
Kinsley?
Yay.
Byers?
Yay.
Brown?
Yay.
Motion passes.
And then another motion on the, uh, closeout audit.
I'm trying to write down everybody's names and stuff, right?
It is common practice that if the treasurer or clerk leaves, town manager, that we have a closeout option, I'm sorry, audit. Excuse me, I meant to say, audit. That is to protect the outgoing person and to protect the incoming.
All right, take a look at that. Resolution to employ professional firms to carry out closeout audit of the funds of the town of Jared. Whereas the town council has elected to employ a new town manager, and whereas it is customary to carry out closeout audit of town funds on the departure of a person who had responsibility for the accounts of the town. Now therefore, be it resolved that the town council directs the town manager to take all the steps necessary to employ an accounting firm to carry out closeout audit for all funds under the authority of the town for the term of the eighth going town. Motion.
Second.
Second. Rollins?
Yes.
O'Berry?
No.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kinsley?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
And by the way, Madam Mayor, I would say, the way you all are doing roll calls on your motions, I had a comment earlier about, in the past, there were motions that were, or actions that were done by roll call, and that was 1998 or so, when the Hanover County had a speed limit ordinance, I think it was with a speed limit, and somebody was convicted for going too fast. And it went to the Virginia Supreme Court, and the court said it's, it's state law required it to be done by unanimous, whatever this action was. And they couldn't prove that it was unanimous, because they didn't have a roll call. And then the code was changed to make it a roll call every time. It is my opinion, there are some things, like if you're going to have a motion to recess for 15 minutes, you don't need to do that by a roll call, because nobody's going to sue you for taking a recess in the whole... But anyway, that's, that's the genesis of that. So thank, I'm glad to see you all doing a roll call.
All right.
I don't recall y'all approving the minutes and taking a vote on it, because everybody got to talk of other things. Didn't you look back and check on that?
We did.
Approved the agenda.
You approved the agenda, but what about the minutes?
Um, it's, it's the consent agenda.
Come on in.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We know.
All right, Mr. Frank, you did say that you could go through DMO and find us an audit.
I think, yes, I, yeah, I can find you an audit that'll hopefully be fairly inexpensive. And yet use...
I'm sure I said I would choose.
I could, I could do an audit, but with my abilities with finances, it wouldn't be anything.
All right, with no further business to conduct, we will adjourn, and it is 9:38.